We are going to start the meeting. It is six oh five on April seventeenth and this is a Groton Board of Education Committee at the Hall. And the first item of agenda is a review of the March twentieth. C O W, a minute, and I would take a motion for acceptance. I am first, can I have a second? I have deemed for the second. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That has carried. Our next order of business, um, so, um, as I think Susan alluded to in her, um, notes and the, is that she is still coming, I think she's still on vacation or coming back from vacation. Um, and we thought it would be just a great time for us to meet our new, um, our new person that collects the data for the district. And so I am actually going to turn it over to Phil to kind of introduce. Um, and maybe we can also introduce ourselves, um, on the board.
Okay, I mean, we could start there, you want to start with introductions, we could go around the table and start with.
Lori, good evening. New manager for data, new data.
I think all her. Which high school?
Pretty close. Charles Barnum.
So yeah, since you're presenting.
Kim Shepherd and Watson, who now has a purchase kiss in my mouth.
William Morgan, who is surgery guest division.
Liz Porter, Port of Ed.
Dean on D five, Port of Ed, I just like her.
Me too.
He's now putting them on the floor, Andrea.
Andrea Ackerman, Port of Ed.
Beverly.
Eric Washington, Board of Ed.
Thank you, Beth. I think we have Jay.
Uh, Jay Whitloff, Board of Ed.
Great. Thank you, guys. So that's our board, some of them are, um, on Zoom. We, uh, Matthew Schulman is not here and I don't see Rita. Um, she either has not joined us or she's not going to be in attendance, um, I'm not quite sure, but I know Matthew is unfortunately with a family friend who has passed, um, in North Carolina, so.
Okay, so we have, uh, we've put together a presentation that we're going to share with you, um, and um, we are going to look at attendance. Let me just get this into slideshow mode. Mode. Um. We, we also invited members of our administrative staff throughout the district to join us, we have I said, and Christie here who just introduced themselves and I see a number, um, that are joining us via Zoom, so, um, at some point during the presentation, I think you'll, you'll see, you know, an obvious point of entry for them in terms of talking about how we're supporting our students. Especially those with, with attendance issue, but we'll walk you through it, basically, what we want to do is, um, you're okay. They can't see that.
I know, but I wanted to make sure that we can see the.
Um, at our goal, as always, is to increase student attendance and staff attendance uh, through consistent and proactive practices. Uh, so again, we're going to outline data for both our students and our staff for you, uh, we're going to talk about interventions that are in place, uh, for both as well. Um, and talk about both our proactive strategies and, and also some of our reactive strategies, um, as we're, uh, given the issue of attendance, uh, for both students and staff. Um, just to, um, define some things for you, because you'll be hearing these these words thrown about during this presentation, um, in terms of truancy versus chronic absenteeism. Uh, as you can see, uh, to the left, truancy counts unexcused absences only. Four unexcused absences in a month, or ten unexcused absences in a year is considered true. Um, on the right side, you see chronic absenteeism, this is all absence, whether it's excused or unexcused. Um, if you miss ten percent of the school year for any reason, um, and that's including disciplinary, you are considered chronically absent. Um, and this does factor into our district's accountability index, which is that number we, we often talk about, that's hard to define um, in terms of where that number comes from, but this is one of the elements that factors in to it. Um, we all understand the educational impact of it, but we wanted to, we show that here. You know, it's well known that, that truancy or chronic absenteeism, uh, plays a part in foundational gaps in learning, uh, in children's academic failure, and of course, they're at a greater risk for dropout for juvenile delinquency. Again, we also have a resource that I want to point out on our web, our web, we have a part of our website, um, that's called Attendance Matters, whi- which really outlines a lot of this information. It also provides some research, I'm sorry, some resources for parents, um, to, uh, on how to work with their children if they're resistant to going to school, it also puts them, uh, guides them into who to contact at the school if they're having problems as well. So, you know, we advise a lot of our, our parents to look at that and board members as well. Um, again, it's another portion of our website. Check out. Um, things to note to when looking at these numbers, uh, again, generally speaking, one to nine days missed over the course of a year is, is considered good or satisfactory. Um, anything more than ten days sort of raises a red flag and, and then, of course, you're at a risk for chronic absenteeism, depending on when that falls. And it is important to note, missing two days a month really adds up to more than ten percent for the year. Um, and it does, you know, hurt the student's success, not only when they return, uh, but also long term. That's what we were talking about, so, um, things to keep in mind. This graphic here, you know, we'll come back to this at the end too, after we sort of talk about all the different steps um, that we do take, um, starting at the bottom, of course, uh, you'll hear about, uh, the attendance reporting across the district, Lauren will take us through that. We have regular attendance monitoring across all grade levels, uh, that happens at the building level, uh, with their attendance teams. Um, and so we'll hear a little bit about what that entails, uh, from some of the representatives here. I think a lot of you know about, but you know, we could talk more about the attendance letters that get sent home, um, at various times to, to let the parents know where their child lies, if they're falling into that, uh, danger zone, parent meetings are held. You know, this, this mentions after the tenth absence, uh, but they happen all the time. Um, anytime, uh, there's a concern at a building level, our parents are brought in to discuss, you know, how, how the building can help. And then, of course, connecting with appropriate community resources as needed, depending on how, um, you know, what kind of support we determine the families and students. So, at this point, I'll, I'll hand it off, we're going to look at some data. This is, again, students, um, but, um, so I'll let Lauren take over.
So what you are looking at here is chronic absenteeism to comparison between our, um, school district and state. Um, and how that would be reported out, so what you're looking at are two separate lines, okay, so the state average, um, for chronic absenteeism is to the left and rotten public schools is to the right. And if you look, you can see that the, um, bottom line, which is in blue, that represents all students. So when we're looking at chronic absenteeism, again, ten percent of the school year, wherever we are in the year. Um, this is the percentage that we're looking at, okay, so for all students, and then we have what we consider high need students, okay, so we separate them to really track them as well. And, um, students who might fall into this bucket would be children who receive free and reduced lunch, children who may have, um, accommodations for an educational plan. Um, students who may be learning for the one language, these are students that would fall into that high needs group. So we keep a close eye on all of our students and, and our high students, and you'll notice that if you're comparing our district to the state, we truly are on par, um, with the state in terms of our trend where we're seeing, um, those levels, how they're changing over time. Um, and as you can see with all of our students, we are really within about one and a half percent of the state average. And that does include, like, when you think about the more affluent communities where there may be more, uh, things may be more readily accessible to them and, uh, they may not necessarily have the same type of barriers. Um, so that number also calculated in state average. So we are within one and a half percent with all of our students and with our high students, we are really within the exception of between, so between two thousand fifteen and two thousand eighteen, we are less than one percent away from that state average. Notice the trend is almost identical, we see that spike in twenty one, twenty two school year, um, just as we did as we're all kind of coming back from
Can I ask a question between the blue and the yellow line, so? So, blue is all students and that includes students with high needs, and then the yellow or the orange line is just the, the, the high need students extracted, okay?
We really, really want to make sure we're, we're focusing on all groups, right, we want to make sure we've got a good signal on all of our students.
I am really sorry, I am just trying to find out. For those, for those who are online and you want to have a question, I think you're just going to have to say something because I've got you, um, it down below, so I'm not going to see it, so please feel free to say, hey, Kim, um, I have a question.
Hey, Kim, I have a question.
Thank you, Beverly.
Okay, uh, my question is, how would this, um, graph look for Groton? If we took the children, um, that are receiving free and reduced lunch out of the high need student line? How would that look for us? Is it possible to do that?
Sure can, and if you give us a few minutes, we're actually going to show you specifically free and reduced lunch, so that's an excellent question.
Okay, and the other thing is, do you have an idea of how we're doing twenty twenty two to, um, this is almost the end of the school year to twenty twenty three?
Yes, as a matter of fact, if we keep going, that information is available to you, we're going to get to that in two seconds, so great question. So let me get you some of those answers to want to look at, before we, we do go into the free and re dues and this year, what we wanted to do is make sure we were looking at, first, we look at the state, right, how are we comparing to the rest of the state? But then, more specifically, we want to look at like districts, right? So when we think about the different school districts in Connecticut, we are grouped according to what they call a DIRG, a district reference group. So, um, communities that have a similar makeup or population, so socioeconomic status, um, similar needs, so this actually is an even better representation of what I, if you will, like apples to apples, right? So when we think about Groton as a school district and what are makes up our community, some other communities that look like ours, um, are Hamden and Middletown, okay, so there's, there are, there's a variance in our socioeconomic status in all three of these communities. There's a variance in, um, the free and reduced versus non-reduced. Um. So this is a great way to really look at where do we compare to someone and, and other districts that are similar to us. And if you could see, so Groton is, is all the way to the left for the first one, we really are steady with our attendance, we're, um, we're below Hamden, uh, by quite a bit, and we're really on par with Middletown, in fact, after COVID, at last year, we didn't have as great of a spike as, as districts relative to us. Um, so that really is a positive. Particularly with our high need students, and we know that, again, is districts similar to ours. They're a large percentage of our population. So we're helping to support those kids. And we're doing a great job in, and sending to other districts within our DIRG.
Kim, can I say something?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, that may be very well true, but we still have a problem. And just because we're doing a little, on, on par with Hamden and Middletown, it's still a problem for the Groton School District. So we can make it look nice by doing these comparisons to other districts, but we have to, like, focus on our district and how we can bring the absenteeism down. And that, to say, oh, well, we're on par, so it's okay, you know, it's not okay, really.
And Bevy, bring up a great point, and maybe I should have prefaced the whole presentation by saying that the data that we're presenting is by no means trying to show that we're in great shape. Some of this comparative data, it's just good to see where we are, um, you know, in comparison, but it, but by no means are we saying that we are happy uh, to where we are. There are going to be some explanations thrown out as to why we think the numbers are where they are, but there are definitely, you know, we can see right here where we need to get back to. So, um, so, so we are not saying that, and we'll, uh, be careful, make sure that we're not saying.
No, this is, this is definitely a process, um, and where we were in a very different place come two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Are ideally, we're going to get back to that and then some, um, and through some of the interventions that we're putting into place and that the schools are really, really focusing on, like, a lot of time and energy going into supporting these families and these kiddos who are having a difficult time getting back to school. So this is really just to lay the groundwork to give you, like, a good, like, bird's eye view of what is happening in our entire state. Um, so if you. So, as we mentioned, last year, this is more or less, if you look at our entire population, twenty eight point four percent of our students are what we would consider chronically absent. So this was last year's data coming off the pandemic.
Different, totally, totally different numbers. We don't have that, we don't have this slide.
You know what? We added this year, we added this.
This was last year?
This was, yes, we did add this after it's printed.
Okay.
It's, no, it's, it's a slide that just got added.
You have the second slide that shows this year, that we, I wanted to show the comparison between last year, just, so I figured that would be a question that was asked, you know? But we had it, we did add this.
So district wide.
So this was last year's district wide, twenty twenty. Yes, twenty one, twenty two data for attendance. We were at twenty point four percent chronically absent. And we can resubmit that, we can resubmit this to you as well, if that's helpful, um.
Yeah, we, we changed some of the colors and we added this, like, again, this is, this is last year, then I'll switch over to the one that you have in front of you in your package for this year. Again, um, not saying that we're anywhere near where we want to be, but this just shows you where we are right now compared to where we were last year, at the end of last year.
And, and just keep in mind, remember, this is all absences, so excused kids who may have been quarantined last year, I, uh, you know, home bound for whatever reason. Um, excused absence is unexcused absence, it's disciplinary actions. Um, and when you think about last year, it there was an adjustment period, um, for students coming back to school, so. Oh, I'm sorry, so can you go back a slide?
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. Yep.
Which one? Yeah, this one?
Yep, that one there, so this is this year's data.
Oh, this year's.
Yes, so you should have last year's and this year's, so this is the twenty two, twenty three here.
Oh, this is twenty two, okay, so this is, this is the red and yellow. For us, it's red and yellow.
Yes, we changed it just to make it a little clearer.
Okay.
So again, going from last year.
To this year.
Then we do. We just wanted to show that slightly.
So you notice that we are making some strides, it is a little bit lower than it was last year. Um. We still have, there is opportunity for that number to fluctuate and even go down a little, um, considering, again, remembering chronic absenteeism is ten percent of the year. So we can help those children get back in school and stay healthy, right? Um, as more days are added, that ten percent becomes less, if that makes sense. Um. Right, and that was amongst this, what we would call tri-demic with the R S V, that was the current clue, uh, the, the COVID breakthroughs. Um, so what we're hoping to do now is hold steady with these numbers, so that ideally, our numbers will decrease each year.
Look at Fitch.
Yeah.
So this is by school. And what you are looking at is in relationship to its entire population, so when we look at C K, for example, twenty three percent of their students are chronically absent, missing more than ten percent of the school year to date. Same thing with, and Yang and Fitch. That's thirty three, for Fitch High School, it's thirty three percent of the total population for Fitch High School.
How many students are we talking about, when, how many kids are at Fitch?
Uh, exactly.
Almost a thousand, exactly?
Yeah, but one thousand.
Do we know what middle school is?
Right, right around.
Right around the same.
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred and something.
I, I just was, I'd like to know what the numbers. You know, like, how many kids are at C K, how many, I don't remember, I know we've had this data before.
And I can give that to you.
I just want to know, you know, I, I'm looking at.
Percentage.
Yeah. Three forty two.
And you're at.
I'm at Barnum.
Barnum, three forty two. But chronic, we, we can't be making the assumption that the chronic absenteeism is just because of illness, but even though.
Right.
And, and there's no way to tease out that data, right, to tease out the kids who are sick.
So that's a big part of what the building administration and the attendance teams in each of the schools are doing. Um, they meet on a regular basis to look at who these students are, and part of what you saw is those steps to interventions. That is what, and feel free, any building administration, administration to jump in and add to this, but they are keeping track of who those students are, who they've met with, what the reasons are for their absences, so they're really trying to intervene and be proactive all at the same time.
Yeah, but, I mean, Christie, if you don't mind, Christie is the assistant principal at, at Charles Barnum, she, maybe you can give us a brief synopsis of the process.
So at the beginning of the year, we identified all of our kids that are over ten absences, and we have a social emotional learning team, which consists of a couple psychologists, myself, um, our behavior tutors, you know, a variety of different people, our, um, military days on person. And we go through every single student, and we make sure that, that every single one of those students have at least some person that they're connected to from the beginning, from the very first day of school. Um, we do that with all of the kids moving forward, we determine who their type of, um, special adult is, they do surveys, and every adult knows who those students are, that are those, that are. We meet once a month to go through every single student. I have a running record of every student that's been absent, as far as if there's some large number, was there a death in the family? Was someone, did they break their leg and they had to be out for a while, whatever it is, so we have a good handle on each one of those kiddos. Um, so we meet bi-weekly for that, and then once a month, I pull the full report and then send out letters or whatever needs to be done. Um, and then, in addition to that, we have certain families that were really, really high last year in particular, that we make phone calls to. So I have a handful of kids that we knew were, you know, chronically absent. I mean, like, over forty absences, like, really severe. So the teachers, every single day, if that child is not there by nine fifteen, call them, and I either call the parent or I text them or whatever it needs to be done, and they're usually there all ten. So not ideal, they're late, but at least they're there, so one family, we had forty five absences, and now they're down to seventeen. So that, to me, is, you know, is a big difference, it's still not going to show up on your graph necessarily, um, because they're still going to be considered chronically absent, but the amount of days that we now have, that's huge. We had another family who was completely, um, just gone for all of COVID, we had a lot of families like that. Never got on, we tried everything we could, brought parents in, and now she's down to sixteen absences, and she had almost sixteen. So, I mean, I feel like some of the things we're doing are really beneficial, and we're putting a lot of time and effort into them. And any new student that comes into our building, we assign one of our team to them until they start to make their own connections. Just so that we, they have somebody that they're constantly connected with, so I think we try to do a lot of that stuff, we can probably get some more questions about that concern.
Is that consistent, I'm sorry, I, I'm just jumping in, and you had your hand up, I apologize. But is that consistent with all the different schools, I mean, does, does Fitch have something going on like that? Does Groton Middle School, do each of the elementary schools have this type of committee together? Are they working in, in concert with each other? Are they talking between schools with kids of same families, but they're at different schools, is that all happening?
I can tell you, you know, we met as a district agency, which meets throughout the year, and, uh, I don't know if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, we, we discussed attendance, just like we're doing here, we discussed attendance, and everybody sort of reported out similar to what Christie just did, um, to see how lined up we were. Um, and, and each school does have a plan very similar to that and are taking different interventions based on their kids. So it is, you know, very, um, unified throughout the district in terms of, of the efforts and the way we're tracking attendance. Um, we could have other share, but I, I'm sure there'll be other opportunities throughout the presentation to, for people to, to jump in. But that is happening, yeah, and we're, we're getting more and more, um, towards, you know, sharing those practices and making sure, having those connections, I know there's conversations happening across buildings, you know, when there's, uh, same families, you know, across our multiple buildings.
So you need to be in the question.
Yeah, so when you talk about your engagement with, with the families, um, those that are missing, um, what have you learned? Is there anything in particular that you've recognized that you need the resources for, like, twenty percent of them will be missing because of, you know, X or Y, and is that stuff that you, data that you can share, like, why the absenteeisms, you know, such as, is it based on their location, their neighborhood, you know?
Yeah.
Um, are they, those that are taking the bus or that are parent drop off, um?
Well, well, kind of the answer to that is yes, so kind of all of those, like, if we had transportation issues, we'd work with transportation to see if we can get a bus to get them with the magnet, you know, process and stuff like that, it's a little bit easier, so some of these kiddos are now on buses versus being dropped off and, and not being, you know, having that issue, uh, one little girl I was referring to, there was a daycare issue because her, she had a sibling that was in preschool and only went to school half a day, and her mother was a single mom and was working. And so the children, and we found this out by working with the middle school and things like that, but the older siblings were taking turns on who took the day off to make sure that she would get on the bus, so we tried to work with those. Um, in our building, some of them are, um, because of, um, military, where if someone is going to be on leave for a certain amount of time, they may leave early to go to a holiday or, because, you know, dad is home for a little while, and they tend to take a little time off. So we find that, which we have, you know, we want to support. Um, so I think it, and then a lot of them have been absences still from the COVID piece, where if a student is not feeling well, then there are certain guidelines that they have to follow before they can come back. So that's actually been the biggest piece right now, is we still have students that are out for four or five days consistently until they can come back with a, with a negative COVID test. Now, it's not, not by any means to the extent it was before. Last year, our numbers were over thirty percent, and right now, we're at twenty one, so, you know, not great, but, you know, making progress. Um, but we make phone calls to parents all the time, start with a teacher phone call first, if that doesn't work, then we have someone from the S E L team, and then if that doesn't work, then I call or set calls, then sometimes that kind of gets them moving a little bit more.
Sitting in on some of these, I'm sorry, sitting in on some of these attendance meetings, uh, the nurses are often present, and, and we, I am hearing that, you know, typical illnesses are, that were usually handled by one or two days out are now five to seven days out still. Uh, people are playing it safe, people want to be, you know, and, and in the past, we encourage them to do that.
Right.
Um, but unfortunately, that's affecting their absenteeism.
So my other question is, that, that I end that is, how are we being proactive with the families, engaging them to say, hey, this is what we've learned? So if your, your student does break their leg, you know, we will make sure they get a specific type of bus to be able to transport them, or, you know, they, you know, if you are having family, you know, issues with, uh, you know, watching your children, please contact X or Y, I mean, we, we've been proactive with sharing things that we're learning from this, and making sure that families have the resources, or at least just know who to call.
Yeah, so, so part of that, that S E L team is our school psychologists and things like that, so, or our social workers, and so a lot of times, if we recognize what we find from a conversation with a parent that that's one of the issues, then they're the next step. They say, well, we're going to have someone to reach out to you and offer you whatever resources, we have a good use of information. Um, but it really comes back to those relationships and having those relationships with your parents, they're comfortable and they're safe, because they don't always, so for a parent. So for a parent to say to me, I'm a single mom and I have to get my baby on the bus someday. I mean, that takes a lot of guts, you know, so it's building those relationships, this connection. So we try to do that and we also try to give them reminders that there's always gonna be emergencies and we understand that. But that, when most people fall within those nine days, it's when we take a day off because it's, it's raining or we take a day off because, you know, mom's gonna be home that day and it would be fun to hang out with her. Or, you know, things like that. We try to eliminate those as much as possible so that they can use that buffer of the nine days in, in a more judicious way.
I'm going to recognize Beverly and then Jay.
Thank you, Kim. What, what have you, um, done differently this year than you did last year to bring down your numbers? And what did you find most successful in helping you to bring down those, that, those numbers? Those absentee numbers? Cause last year you said you were higher, this year you're twenty-one percent. So, um, what did you do to, that was, was successful in bringing that percentage down? And are you doing anything different this year than you did last year?
Um, thank you. Um, so one of the things that we did was, we found on our student survey that one of the questions asked about what your, who your trusted adult is, who you go to in the building. And a lot of our kids, you know, didn't know what that question meant or didn't have one. So we spent a really big effort, our entire social emotional learning team went into every classroom and did lessons. We made a video with the kids and, you know, Seth and I about what it looked like. And then they had the opportunity to identify each, each of them to identify someone. And then we went through that entire list of every student to make sure everybody had someone. And if they didn't, then we made a point of someone in our building reaching out to them. Um, and I think that that has made a huge difference. A lot of them said their teachers, but many of whom did not and said someone different, which we were, some of them, we were kind of caught off guard and didn't think that there was a relationship there or as much of a connection and there was. So we've spent a tremendous amount of time doing that. And I think that, and then the kids going home and being able to say, oh, this is my go-to person. I think makes it more comfortable for parents to reach out. And those have been the people that we've had reach out to the family. So if it's one of my students, I would reach out, if it's Seth's, he would reach out. The nurses, she would reach out just so that they knew that that's a student, most likely someone that the students have been going home and talking about on a regular basis. Um, and we review them every, we look at it every two weeks to see if there's anything really big. But every month, um, we make sure that we are connecting with any of those families to have some big jump or big change.
And I know that's consistent throughout the buildings and monthly meetings.
Yeah.
Um, I also just wanted to go back to something Christie said about identifying kids from the previous year and, and being proactive in contacting those families. I think that's a great practice that we wanna make sure we get into all of our buildings. And passing that information on as the kids transition, um, from elementary to middle and from middle to high, uh, making sure that communication's happening so we can work with those families who have been chronically absent for just a few years. I, I wanna encourage the, uh, members of the administrative team that are on the Zoom, just raise your hand so we know if you have something to add.
Can I also just see what's on the floor too?
Yeah, yeah, cause I don't, I don't wanna call on you blindly and just force you to speak, but if you have something to say on a given topic, please ring me.
Jay?
Yes, um, so I, I, I really, um, like the idea of where Dr. Horgan and Beverly were going with, uh, really analyzing why and what we can do. Um, however, the data is a little confusing. So if, if we have a student who was registered to attend the school, and we hear anecdotally that this happened during COVID, and then they just never showed up again. I mean, how long are we tracking that student as absent? And is there any way to break the data down more to show if a school has a thirty-three percent absentee rate, uh, what percentage of the student body is contributing toward that? Um, you know, these, these, um, numbers, you know, the, the building-wide numbers may not really reflect, the, the reality of it, if you were to break it down. There may be a couple of students, you know, who've been absent fifty, sixty days, and is that skewing the data? Or do you have some way to, to smooth that out? And then secondly, um, I know we, uh, made an effort to, um, hire more social workers. And part of what my understanding was, was that funding was going toward, they were gonna be working on, um, attendance, but I don't see any social workers here. Um, can we get a report, um, from that team? And, um, is that, has that been effective? Uh, and do we need more?
Jay, go into your first question, like, that, that, like, say the thirty-three percent from Fitch, that represents thirty-three percent of the student body. So, so that does, you, you know, we didn't put the number of students that means, but that is, that is a number of students from the school that are chronically absent.
So thirty-three percent of, of all students there have been out for more than ten days?
Been out more than ten percent, what day are we on?
More than ten, more than ten percent, okay.
More than ten percent.
Yeah, so about thirteen.
Yeah, so it would actually, because we're on day like one thirty right now, so it would be thirteen days, seven, it's more than thirteen days.
And do we continue to track them even if, they've been out for extended periods? I mean, um, you know, a, a, as I said, we were told at one point that we had lost a number of students. We had administrators going door to door, knocking on doors to see if people were still in town. Do we have a good handle on, you know, how many of, of those students are actually still in the district?
Uh, so just talking about the high school and, and I think, you know, Christie, uh, went through the transfer process with the elementary school in Charles Barnum. Um, you know, the high school, we send out, uh, letters for any student that has missed, uh, two absences in a month or, uh, four absences, uh, in a quarter, uh, to just let the parents know. It goes through, the letter actually states how many absences they have in each specific class. Um, and then also how many tardies they have, because we also have the issue with high school in regard to credit. Uh, the students can actually lose, uh, lose, uh, credit for courses based upon their absenteeism. Um, in addition, then we do also have, uh, our assistant principal meet, uh, with two guidance counselors each to go through, uh, the SRDI process for both students to determine, uh, if there is, uh, those, those absentee issues. Um, I'm sure this is not specific to the high school to answer your question about students that are, um, uh, not just chronically absent, but simply not attending. Uh, we do have a list of students that there are different reasons for that. Um, you know, you, you said like, kind of what have we learned? Uh, one of the things we've learned is that it's really specific for the student, that, you know, it's almost a different reason for each specific student. You know, we have students that, uh, you know, have, you know, some special needs, uh, that, you know, we're working with, you know, either five oh four or the special education plan. We're working with those, those teams. We have students that are required to go out on homebound because of health issues. Again, even though the student is receiving education, they are not physically in the school, that counts against us, uh, with a chronically absent. Uh, with the, uh, uh, the, uh, students that, um, there are, uh, a number of students that actually have physically withdrawn from us, but are still, we're, we still are required by the state to work on those students because they haven't enrolled somewhere else. So we are actually in charge of finding out where they are. Um, and so we're working with some of those, that, that can be very, very difficult. Um, and then there's the, the students that are simply not attending because of whatever reason. And then again, and so those, those numbers do count against us. The other piece is from the high school and I'm sure at the middle school. I can't specifically talk about this data, but historically, as I've looked at this data, um, out of school, out of school suspensions count against us on this, on this data. Uh, which generally, again, I, I can't specifically talk about this data because I haven't seen, or generally higher at the middle school than the high school level when they are at the elementary. So, uh, so those are included on this as well. Um, so the, uh, but it's something where, you know, I think Christie did great job, not a rehash whole thing, but, you know, we, we focused not only on the attendance, but also on the credit. And it's more about making sure we're educating our families on who do you reach out to if you, if you have those issues, which are all in the letters.
So just a quick follow-up on, on that. Again, I, I'd be curious to know if, if we could, without obviously, uh, giving any specific student data, I mean, how, how, how do we arrive at that thirty-three percent figure? How many are students that we don't even know if they're in the district anymore? How many are based on? So if they're, uh, if they're removed from the school, they're, they're still on that list. Can, can we get more data about how we came to those numbers?
Yeah, we can go a little bit deeper on that, Jay, definitely.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand here is what, you know, what's driving the numbers, uh, by building? And then just, just curious if we have anything that we can do, maybe in the future, to talk to the, the so- social workers who might have a better pulse for, um, what's going on here?
So Meg, I see that you have your hand raised. This is a public meeting, but this is not, um, the committee as a whole is not the time where we, um, recognize people from the public. Um, we do have an option if there's anyone from the board who would like to recognize and take, and have you take their turn. Um, I will open that up for, eh, um, for the board member. But if not, this is, um, once again, this is a public conversation, um, but it's not for public comment.
Kim, I have a quick question.
Absolutely, Beverly.
Okay, um, at the high school, excluding the students with medical issues and the students, uh, that have out of school suspension, um, do you call? Because I heard the other, uh, assistant principal, if I'm not mistaken, saying they actually call the house. You said you send letters. Do you call the house and actually speak to the parents?
Yes, we do.
And does the high school still have an attendance, um, person?
Yep, yep. Diane Strong is, is our attendance clerk at the, at the high school. Uh, and she does make physical phone calls, uh, as, and then we will call through the counselors as well. And then, uh, I call and oftentimes a meeting with the family as well, uh, especially when it comes to credit issues. So, uh, yes, we do have that entire process. I didn't go through the whole process, it's very similar to what, uh, what Christie was able to go through. But, uh, you know, we do make phone calls, um, in regard to, if we're, at least if we're not getting a call from the parents, we know what's going on with that particular student.
And how successful are you, um, with, um, calling, improving your, um, the student's attendance?
Um, well, I'd like to be better than thirty-three percent, I can tell you that much. Uh, the, uh, I, I don't know if I can really say how successful we've been. It really depends on the kid and the family in terms of actually getting them in. Um, you know, I think that our numbers have improved, but we certainly have a long ways to go, especially to buy a school.
What was your, what was your percentage last year? I don't have that in front.
I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly what it was.
Was it higher than this year?
I would imagine so.
We can get that number, that we can fill that number in for you too. Um, these are, these are a lot of great questions everybody's coming up with, and these are ones that, uh, you know, we'll make sure to follow up on. We, we do have, um, a few more, uh, breakdowns of the data that I'd love to go into. And I, and I'm sure these questions will, uh, will continue to, uh, to come up throughout and we'll have different people chime in, but, um.
Hey, Kim, if I have any more time left over, I will, um, give some of my time to the, I don't know if it was a parent or whoever that was that wanted to speak.
Um, she put her hand down and we're gonna go through that slide, but if you would like to, for the next, this next slide for this conversation, if you would like to, um, I will let her be recognized.
So this information is, uh, it's a district level, um, by grade level. So if you look at the beginning, um, you can see that kindergarten has a higher chronic absenteeism rate, um, which makes sense when you think about entering this school, particularly after a pandemic, right? There's been a lot of illness, there's, uh, you know, they've managed to catch just about everything this year. We typically see kindergarten with higher, um, attendance issues. Um, some of our lower ones, which are interesting, is grade four. They're, they have the lowest chronic absenteeism. And, um, grades seven and nine and eleven are grades that we, um, would like to focus on to see what exactly is happening there, why those numbers, um, are a little bit higher. You would anticipate, you know, if it was a transition year, like the ninth graders, you could see how that might make sense. We could speculate grade eleven, you know, are there college tour, college tours happening? Are there those types of preparing for graduation that are, uh, adding up throughout the year? So we would like to take a closer look at that as we move forward and then move backwards also, see why those particular grade levels have higher numbers.
Yeah, I mean, that's going back to Bev's question of why, you know, just taking a different look at, you know, why the numbers are, you know, why is grade four so low? Why is grade seven so high? Um, those are, we're gonna be working with the attendance teams at the school to, uh, to look a little bit closer.
And we recognize Dean.
Yeah, in addition to the causes, uh, so, some medical, some, their age, but, um, I'd be curious too about the season. One, because like something just occurred, can I remember way back when I was in entry school, who that there were some family who didn't, but the school never knew. So I'm wondering, I don't know whether that's why Fred, whether that's why, uh, out. Is it a bollocks, is that, is there anything seasonal from the data, probably can't lay it out correctly? Is there anything seasonal about the absence?
Sure.
Hey, hey, Kim, Kim, does Dean have a microphone in front of him?
Oh, you can't hear me?
Not really, it sounds muffled, like, you know, we, we gotta get better microphones or something here.
He's, he's pretty far away, and I guess I'll tell him to remove the sock.
But she told me to put a sock on, so.
Can you please say your, just, uh, surmise?
Uh, Dean on T bus one sixty-four, apparently. Uh, no, I mean, basically, I was interested in the seasonality, make up a word, of the, of the absences. Is there something going on maybe by season? Only because, I mean, my, my wife and I were floored when we saw this. You would actually take your kids out of school to go down to Disney. I understand it's a fun trip and all, but we would never have imagined that people did that. So to me, anything is possible at this point.
Indeed, I'll tell you, as, as a, when I was a principal, um, that used to really get to me when I, when I'd see that happening. But more and more, I'm seeing, you know, just if you, if you investigated a trip to Disney over a break, that's, you know, it's, it's about three times the cost of it would be if I went in October or November. And I think that plays a, a big piece into it. And so, like, I, I've, I've mellowed over the years in terms of, um, of the annoyance that used to bring me as a principal, uh, because I knew that was affecting, but that definitely, I think, is a, is, is playing a role here.
Also the holidays, yeah, are, are people taking more days around Thanksgiving, more days around Christmas? Uh, checking out early in the year rather than waiting to all the way to the end of June?
Yeah.
Maybe depending on the school, um, and the population in that school, the reason would look different. Some schools that have higher, um, percentages of, like, your language learners tend to go on longer holidays, right, throughout that January period versus maybe another school that is enjoying those Disney trips somewhere else. So I think that would be dependent to, might see seasonal trends in certain buildings, right? So that would be interesting to look at as well.
So Jamal, I don't mean to be putting you on the spot, but I would love to hear a little bit about, um, the Groton Middle Schools' experience, um, in terms of, of, uh, not only just the grade level, but also yours. I don't mean to put you on the spot, buddy.
Oh, no, no problem, just listening. Um, I don't, I really don't have much more to, to share than what was already shared in terms of our, you know, intervention strategies that we have in place. Um, we, we definitely, um, try to be proactive, um, to the point, and this was already mentioned, but I just wanna reiterate. Um, really, uh, at the beginning of the year, identifying, uh, those students who have had, um, some history with issues with absenteeism. So we've utilized data from EdSite, uh, Secure, to be able to identify who those students are. Um, we do our, uh, fifth grade to sixth grade, uh, transition. We, um, you know, speak to the fifth grade staff, the administration to identify who those students and try to, again, build relationships uh, with, with those students as well as their families, but also, um, make them aware of the importance of, uh, attendance, particularly at the secondary level, uh, the impact that it will have as they move and transition from the middle school to the high school with, with credits. And so we, we try to do that. Uh, I think it's important, uh, to, to be reflective of that, you know, our numbers have spiked, uh, due to the pandemic, not for the point of, of saying, you know, this is why we're in this situation, but it's understanding that, um, there has developed a pattern, um, where, um, more students are, are absent, and some of that has to do with, um, Um, obviously illness, but it other for other reasons as well. So we're trying to create a culture in which um you know, students really want to come to school. Um and um so. It's important that we do uh establish relationships as was already stated, so we 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 try to make sure they have a point of contact. We're in a little bit of a unique situation compared to the elementary schools. Um in the fact that not only do we have, you know, school social workers, uh we we have school counselors and our school counselors at the middle school particularly. Are involved in that social emotional piece. So they're doing more than just um scheduling and and things of that nature. But they're also working on establishing um intervention plans, and so we haven't um. Them really take the lead on building those relationships, and then we utilize our social workers. Uh to be able and we and we at our school, we do have two social workers to develop um or. Find resources for families um if if they need them to identify, once we have identified those barriers. Um that they have. But one of the probably one of the things that seems to work uh the most is um particularly those students who have had. Um have gone beyond the the ten where we see there there's there's a pattern. Um, you know, home visits when we when we go to the home and we're knocking on the doors and we are um willing to to meet them. Um in their in their community and really. Share with them that we're there to help. Uh that has been probably the has had the most impact. The letters have an impact. Um in terms of initiating that communication because in that letter, we're saying that, hey, we want to. Um, develop a relationship with you. We want to be able to be supportive, but when we knock on those doors, that that helps. Um and so I I think. Helping uh us being able to maybe have that at all three levels would be something I would. It would would love for us to really think about in the future is how do we begin to really knock on those doors? Um, you know, with with individuals that they know they can build relationships with and they they can work because what you. What we tend to see is that we start to see a pattern where those students are coming back, but they will have some times where they're. Unfortunately, not showing up and being able to go back there and 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 knock on the door again, they really see that we really care about them. So. That's probably the biggest thing that I see um that has really worked for us so far.
Thank you, Jamal. Beverly?
Thank you, Kim, and and thank you, Mr. Davis. Um I'm glad you brought up about going door to door and building relationships. Because that to me is key in getting the students to come to school. Um but the point I want to make is, as I look on this graph, on the graphs that uh are before some chronic absenteeism. The pandemic started in twenty twenty. This graph, we started in increasing uh absenteeism started to elevate in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. So that was, you know, it was happening slightly before the pandemic, so I just want to make that point.
Bev, which graph were you looking at?
I'm looking at the graph that says chronic absenteeism state versus Groton and. From what I can see, like it started elevating in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the numbers started going up. That's all I'm saying. So we keep saying, oh, because of the pandemic, because of the pandemic, at some point. We're gonna have to stop saying because of the pandemic, this happened and that happened, and just focus on the here and now.
Yeah, I mean, the graph I'm looking at, you know, and I think I put it up on the screen. Um, between twenty fifteen and and twenty nineteen, you know, it went from eleven point one to twelve point two. Right? That's where you're looking? Which which yes, is a is a slight increase. And then, of course, it. And then, of course, it jumped up over the over the next two years. But you're right, and I think I think Jamal made a good point is that, you know, it it's just a factor that we have to take into consideration. Um but knowing that, yeah, now here we are, it's gonna be the twenty three, twenty four school year, you know, what, you know? How are we gonna make this better? And I think you're hearing bits and pieces of what the different schools are doing. And again, focusing on the relationships and and go doing that door to door check is gonna hopefully make a huge impact. I think we've seen some of it. Uh, you know, some of the impacts already, but we have to uh. We have to continue to be as proactive as we can be, and we can continue to share ideas as to what's working and what's not working. And again, that's part of the conversation here, I think, um to work with the board with that as well. Um, looking a little bit more, and again, some of these things we've already uh discussed, but just some further breakdowns to look at. Just so you can see the different ways that we're looking at the data.
So again, we um we're looking at those. Those students that are considered high needs and free and reduced lunch is um one. Element that um identifies a child as. Being hired need um.
Go ahead. I I need you to continue.
Nope, sorry, I'm okay. Being of higher need. So when you think about the Groton district, almost half of our district is free and reduced lunch. Um. So, right from the start, we are. We are needing those extra supports um to help families and students. Um, be successful. When you look at free and reduced lunch in relationship to chronic absenteeism. Almost sixty percent of our students who receive free and reduced lunch are the ones that are chronically absent. So there's definitely a correlation between the two, which we we knew. Um this just. Verifies that. Um. Which again is is part of that bigger conversation of how do we support those those families? Like like it was already mentioned, right? Developing those relationships so that. Families can say, I'm struggling, I need help with, or this is the reason why, so that we can. Uh provide them the resources or introduce them to certain community resources that are available that maybe they don't know about. So when we're all kind of working together. That's that's the best way for us to bring these numbers down. And again, this is just another breakdown. So you're looking at district uh by ethnicity.
So do we just have a different color here?
Yes. Yep, you do.
All right.
You do.
So it's the twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty three, which was gonna be one of my questions. I didn't know what year we're looking at.
Yeah. Dates on top, people that would help clarify.
Yes.
Um. So again, so with with the different ethnicity groups, um the breakdown in the district and then the breakdown in relationship to chronic absenteeism. It's fairly similar the two graphs, but the place that stood out the most, if you look at our Hispanic population. The twenty five percent of our district is made up of of the his our Hispanic um population. Yet thirty percent of um Hispanic population is chronically absent. So there's a greater increase there with our. Hispanic students being chronically absent. And so that's just, again, another layer to be looking at and thinking about when we're trying to support our um our families in our community. Well, how can we capitalize on this? How could we take this information and what we now know? To provide the supports or to figure out the reason why.
Can I ask a quick question, Kim?
Ab- absolutely.
Um, when you dealing with the Hispanic community, do you have an Hispanic person that calls them or? And tries to, you know, somebody that can relate to the Hispanic community?
Um, is there a building rep that might be able to uh speak to that? I'm not sure whether it's here or. Online?
Uh any of our social workers Hispanic?
I see Jamal um has raised his hand.
Uh any of our social workers Hispanic?
I do not.
I I don't know that off the top of my.
Well, that would be something for us to look at at as a board, um hiring an Hispanic social worker.
Okay. Amen.
Yes, so I can speak to to the middle school. Um, we we did recently have a Hispanic, they they no longer in the district, they uh moved closer to home. Uh but we've have uh really uh in terms of our hiring, um you know, um. Do consider that as part of the process um to be able to have that skill set is it's it's something. That we look for as well as, you know, other skill sets. Um we do have several individuals within um our school system. Who are are fluent in in Spanish, um who's. I can tell you uh that I've seen has helped tremendously. Uh Mr. Danielick. Uh, one of our assistant principals who is fluent in in Spanish has been um instrumental um in really connecting with families. Um explaining sometimes those letters uh as they're going through those letters, um explaining to them what the process, how the. Um absenteeism um is calculated, and so that is very helpful as well. Uh but we also have, as I mentioned, some other staff members as well that are part of that process. But again, going back to your initial point of uh ensuring that we can build those relationships, um being bilingual. Uh particularly uh with uh English and and Spanish has been extremely helpful.
Can I just um uh pause for a second? There's um seems to be quite a lot of activity on the chat. And this is a public meeting. The problem is, is that those of us who are present. Um, we are so far away from the screen, we can't see. I know we had a parent who asked a couple of questions in terms of. Um absentee policy. I have requested that our assistant superintendent reach out to your um child's building administrator. Who could then um contact um uh who can then contact you um about the absentee um uh policy. Yeah, reporting procedures. So um but just to understand that when you do some chatting with those of us who are present, which is me. Um, um is we can't see, I can't, there's, I had decent. I say I can't see what's happening on the chat and then it becomes incredibly um uh. Thank you. That's I can't even say the word distracting. So I'm not trying to be mean. Um I want I want your answers to be answered. Um, but it's really hard when you do it on the chat and a public meeting.
Bev, did you? Was your question answered?
It was answered for the middle school, but not for the entire school district. So that that answer from Mr. Davis was what he's doing at the middle school. That was very good. I appreciate that answer. But um what about the entire district? We all all our Hispanic kids aren't at the middle school, so.
Right, and that is one of the lowest in terms of staff representation that we have district wide is is Hispanic. So. So you've identified an area of concern, definitely. Is there anybody else who wishes to uh? Speak on that from Zoom? Alright, so we'll continue to explore that then, definitely. Um, there was another aspect of attendance that I wanted um Ms. Cizini to to sort of address that a lot of us probably don't know too much about, so. That's what the next step is here.
So just the consideration and just for your knowledge of um. The unique place we are um at as a school district in Groton with our military families. There is policy, Connecticut policy in place um for military families where they are. Um allotted ten additional days. Than all other students. So when we think about, you know, your your students and the what's considered excused for the state level. According to Connecticut policy, so this policy came as the result of like, it it's called the compact, um. Which is, you know, a federal um policy. Connecticut took that and created their own policy related to it. Basically stating that uh military families, students of military families who have. Parents or loved ones that are being deployed or come back from deployment are are allotted ten additional days. On top of the. The nine days, okay? Um. However, and this is the however that we began to have conversations at the state level, we um. That doesn't, that doesn't help us with that accountability index. So we're still dinged. For those students being considered chronically absent. Although policy states that that they are allotted this. So we began the conversation with our state representative um who works with us through the school district. So we're looking closely at that, but it's just for your knowledge that this policy does exist to Connecticut, and it greatly impacts. Groton in particular. There is no other district, maybe um. Thank you, Legerd, um which might be close, but not to the extent. Um of Groton. So it's just uh just a piece to consider. It's not an excuse. It's not, it's just have that. That piece of information talked away and know that we are looking at it. Um, and trying to open those conversations.
Um, so again, I just brought it back to the slide. You know, we've hit a lot of these areas, I think, with some of your your questions. Um, before we moved on to uh. Staff attendance, excuse me, um you know, are there questions that you you want us to sort of? Go back and and look for or um and research for you or hear uh more from the school representatives before we move on. Uh to staff and and I'll stop sharing just so we can see the screen.
Liz?
I would be interested, especially from your school, about the impact of this this law.
I just wrote it down.
Yeah, because um I know a lot of families, and I used to live in that district myself. And when dad came in or mom came in. You know, kids were gone. And so if we're if we're having to report out, especially for like. Or for Groton Middle or for um Pitch High School.
Yeah.
And parents are coming home and they have, you know, the state's saying one thing, and yet they're penalizing us. For following what they've said the law is. And so I think I I applaud you for for you guys. Did this conversation going with the state reps and saying this is wrong. But I would like to know really how it impacts. What's that impact look like?
Not which percentage of.
Oh, yeah. What percentage of the chronic absentee is due to deployments? People who are coming back, you know, that's that's connected with a military aspect of it. I would really like to know that.
Andrea?
I'm I'm on the uh state board for military children and uh in in training that I took about a month ago. It was made clear that federal law supersedes state law. So I'm unclear on how the state is holding us accountable for children who of the military. Who are out on what is uh federally mandated. So I I don't know where we would go for that. Perhaps Miranda, I don't know, but um somebody ought to be ought to be able to to answer that question. Maybe we should speak to the. State representatives.
Yeah, I think I think we have included Miranda in these conversations, but um if you'd like to be looped into those, you know, with the position that you hold. We could just so you're in the loop.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
You can do that. Cause that is the that is the question, right? That's the big question.
Yeah, I I don't know, it, you know, have have we talked to the uh. To the state representatives to or to Senator Summers or have we?
Yeah, I believe those just initial conversations, sort of making them aware of its impact, but um. We're gonna continue to follow up and 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 work with that, so.
Thank you. I I would like to be included.
Okay.
William?
Um, do we have the data? My military families, military friends. What they what percentage they make up of all the absentee?
Of the absent, so I know um they've been working on identifying all the military.
You guys are both very low voice, and so people on Zoom land are not gonna be able to hear you.
We can get that for you.
We just make this much shorter.
Thank you.
Kim, I have a question. I don't know if that was a question William asked, but how many of our families are taking advantage of this uh the Senate bill? Number two seventeen.
Um, it it wasn't the exact question, but it was absolutely in the same ballpark, and she's gonna get us the data um about what our uh military students are. Um, and who have taken advantage of that.
Okay, and I I I'm with Jay on getting the social workers to come to the a board meeting. And and let's hear what they're doing and what their role is in all of this and how um, you know, it's good to hear from the social workers.
I'm pretty fond of them. Don't know why.
You said you were fond of the principals. We brought them to you, so we will bring the social workers to you as well. We will get them to the table.
Any more of questions uh before we move into the staff staff absenteeism? Any more questions before we move into the staff, staff absenteeism?
I do have one more, Kim. On the improve in attendance, one step at a time slide. What's different that we're doing on this page than we did last year?
No, it's the one that he was just on.
Right. What's different this year that you have on your slide than you had last year?
Were the, and I'll, and I'll ask this question. You know, were the, were the meetings happening, the, the parent meetings, the, I mean, the attendance letters I know were going out. But I think last year we were, we gave a lot more leeway because of.
Well, I think the state was giving a lot more leeway last year. And I think that, you know, just a, for example, you know, last year, you could be sending 10 or 15 kids out of school a day, sending them home because of contact. Now, the student would be sent home, they would be counted as absent because the state, you know, the, the, if they're not sitting in the seat, then they're, they're absent. So it's something that the, you know, last year, absenteeism was a very different thing than it is this year. It just because, you know, because of COVID. So last year, yes, we were sending home the letters. Yes, we were, you know, setting up for, for students that were really bad shape, we're setting up meetings and so on. But even from the high school standpoint, we weren't pulling credit because of, because of absence last year because, because kids were almost, you know, we had a huge amount of students that were absent just because of illnesses. So it was something where, you know, a lot of it's the same, but I think it's more in terms of, you know, the focus on it and, and the, the importance of it. This year.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I, I think you saw from some of the data, you know, we weren't at, you know, at an ideal place before COVID. I mean, we were at 11%. You know, we, the, the state wants us at 5%, which I don't think many districts hit at all. But to what the, what the pandemic did was just create bad habits. And then we're trying to get the families out of those habits. And the state, again, by giving us leniency over the last couple of years now is sort of stepping things up. And so that's why our efforts have sort of stepped up as well. And while we still want people to remain safe, we want them, you know, we're stressing that we need them to be in school to avoid these, these gaps in their learning.
There are heightened level of outreach too with the pandemic going on this year versus last year, given the leniency has waned, right? So there's been a heightened sense and more outreach activity from what I've heard from you guys.
And I, and I think that to answer it also, Beverly, is that I think that our letters are more consistent. We developed at the district level, a absentee letter that is much more specific. And in Power School, it has a program where it's able to track them much easier so that we are not trying to manually track them in the buildings. So we have the ability to, once we send a letter, kind of check them off. And then we know not to send that letter again until they get to a different level, you know, things like that. So I think we've added the Power School component, which allows us more time to have those individualized, more personal conversations so that we're not spending all that time data. I mean, Phil walks into our building and most of the time my head is in attendance data, just because we're trying to tease it out and trying to get the most information. But I think that's been a huge piece and having the data team really take that on as a whole group this year. And we'll talk about it more deeply. I guess this has been one of the additions that we've added.
How do you actually know that the parents are getting these letters?
Because they call. My parents, my parents will call and say, I just got this letter and you, can we talk about this? So I've had a lot more parents actually reaching out to me, you know, even just from that first letter. So we've been able to have conversations much earlier, even at like the level of the four fluency versus waiting till, you know, like they get to 10. So for, for my, for my perspective, I think that we've had more parents calling and being engaged and, you know, and things like that.
Are they required to call? Or want to let it? No? Okay.
No, with the fourth one, no, they're not required to call with the 10th one. We reach out or, you know, a lot of times they'll reach out to us ahead of time before we do. But I think parents are a little more aware of it and a little more engaged to it.
And, and then another question, how successful are you with getting the parents to come and meet with you?
Again, it's sometimes very successful and, and other times we're, we're really trying to get in touch with that parent. You know, and in other words, in other piece, when we're really having students that are really in bad shape, especially in regard to credit, sometimes we'll even do certified mail to make sure that we are getting that, to make sure that we know that it actually was received. And then we are calling to make sure that the students are coming in for those meetings. You know, and eventually if a parent will come in, we'll at least try to get the student when they do come to school to meet with us and figure out what's going on. Because sometimes it's, it's about not engaging, the family's not engaging. And again, we are doing home business as well, just like the middle school was talking about. When we really are having difficulty getting in touch, we'll actually go out alone.
And you think by doing these one, two, three, four, five steps, that next year, when you come before us with attendance, that the percentages will go down?
Well, I mean, that's the hope. And, and of course, bringing in, you know, it's not reflected on here. Either is the different questions that have come up tonight. You know, how, how are we using our counselors? How are we using the, the social workers? So those could, I mean, they play a part in a lot of these steps. But we could get more specific and really expand their roles if we see the problems, you know, continuing.
These are really summarized steps. It's not a full picture as, as we heard of what's actually happening with every building. I think that that relationship piece is probably the biggest piece.
My, my hope is that the more relationship we have, the better off we're going to be because we've been so disconnected. That there were many parents, we didn't even know what they looked like. We couldn't recognize their voice on a phone, but we hadn't seen them for over two years. Or some parents had never been to the building because their students were in kindergarten when they left. So I think that trying to build those connections again and, and having people kind of come out of their shells because we were all kind of isolated in our own spaces. I think that that's going to be a big piece, just keep working at that.
And we do get to that at the end of this presentation, but you know, I, I've noticed at least across this year that each of the buildings have had more community events. You know, in the two years previous, you know, we weren't not inviting, we weren't allowing parents to come into the building just for safety precautions. So, you know, we are, you know, this year we've had concerts and plays and spaghetti dinners and different ways. All of these build community, give those opportunities for building relationships with families, you know, with administration, with your teachers, with other families, all which play a part in building that community that kids want to come through every day at school. So a lot of those, you're right, are not, you know, you don't see those in these, in these steps here. These are more general things, but I know we've done a lot more of that. And so we're hoping to see some positive effects in that. And those are just going to increase as, you know, as we move into next year.
So I know one of the other initiatives has been a lot of after school clubs, especially in the upper levels. I know you're familiar with it, but to be able to find those extracurricular activities that maybe are clubs, not, not sports and clubs, but more clubs so that we can hopefully draw those children back to school. Because if they, if they come to school, then they can participate in these after school activities, which are really fun, like e-gaming and some of those things where we might spark their interest to come, kind of along those lines.
All right, let's move us on to staff attendance.
All right. And Lori Lapine is going to take us through the staff attendance slides. So it's just a few, we broke it down in a few different. Start with the breakdown of total absence.
So before we dive into that, I just want to answer Beverly's question. She specifically asked before I jump into the staff data and we close out on some of the student data. There is a, an element of diversity. I was taking the numbers while we were talking among social workers, school psychologists and counselors. So that was one of your questions. There is an element of diversity there, but within the schools, if there isn't certainly someone who's maybe bilingual within those groups. I know like Jamal said, maybe a member of administration, we have bilingual teachers. So I know each school does identify those bilingual resources to help connect with those parents. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that the district does have access to translation services for multiple languages too. So we are having difficulty communicating with parents. The school do have the ability to access that, that resource as well. So I will dive into this through the staff data. So what we did is we, we took a look, we have the last four years of data, including the current year to date. Basically, what were the factors, what were the factors that contributed to the majority of the absences in the course of a year? So we did take a look at those categories, which is, if you see on the screen, blue is personally for family illness. Red is personal leave for an emergency. Yellow is professional development in district. Green is professional development out of the district. And then red is the illness color. So, so that is personal illness, meaning not a family member. They, they staff member themselves are ill. So obviously, I, you know, obviously we don't need to probably state the obvious, but we can certainly see the trend has grown. I think there's a, there's a significant element here of COVID illness. There's just no other way to describe it. You can see as we take a look back to 2019, 2020, where we were at the 26.66% illness. You know, the, a fair amount of that year was in person, obviously, until March 2020. And then we started to see some increase. So, you know, we can see where we were kind of almost pre-pandemic levels. And then we can see in 2021, we saw actually a decrease. And that was because there was a lot of at-home learning going on, if you recall. A lot of staff members were frankly able to kind of work through some of their illness and continue to work because they were working remotely. So we actually saw a decrease for that reason. And then, you know, then again, you know, certainly some spikes in 21, 22 and 22, 23. When we return to in-person learning, still dealing with COVID-related absences. Back in 21, 22, we're still dealing with longer absence for COVID. And if you recall, we're still at that point in the seven day and 10 day quarantine and our isolation requirement. So that drove those numbers up in 21, 22. And then in 22, 23, we're still frankly, we're seeing breakthrough COVID at this point, you know, breakthrough illnesses due to breaking through the vaccines, which I'm sure everybody's familiar with. So, you know, certainly our goal as we move forward is to continue to, you know, see a decrease in these numbers as, and also we're, we're also this year primarily on masks, which plays a role as well. This is the first full school year with them. There was, there was no mask mandate. So that, that plays a factor. We did see a slight increase in family illness over that time period for similar reasons. You know, families with, you know, staff members with young children who are required to take turns with their significant other and, and quarantine their, their children or isolate their children due to illness. So we did see, you know, you can see there is an element of increase last few years due to that as well. Certainly our goal moving forward is to see these numbers decline and hopefully get us back to a place where we're pre-pandemic levels. That's the goal. But certainly we know for sure that that has impacted the last, you know, three years of our absence. And then what's not here, what's not included in here is fmla leaves. We have, we have split those out. Those are not on the chart because for, you know, obvious reasons. They're, they're, you know, they're medically necessitated, so we didn't put those here.
Lori, after how many days of absenteeism do the teachers have to bring in a doctor's note?
If they're absent more than five consecutive days, we start the fmla process. So so I would say five days, a week's worth of time. And then we invoke the fmla process, then we would start to work with them on what their medical needs are on an ongoing basis.
Did you ever think about shortening that from a week to like three or four days? I mean, so a teacher could be at a whole week without a doctor's note. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, I would say that could happen. That's correct. I mean, there are cases where the teacher contacts us right away and says, I'm going to be absent for five days or 10 days. I know I have a medical need. And we would certainly, you know, have that communication right away. But, but I would say the, the principals and the assistant principals, they do watch that very closely. You know, they're watching it at day three and day four. They're talking with us in HR about what the prognosis of that person's needs are. So I wouldn't want to imply that they just disappear for five days. There's a dialogue that's going on during that five day period.
Oh, William, I'm sorry.
So the PD, that is professional development? So is that predictive? Like, do you know, like, next year, you know, who's going to be out with, you know, in and, and out of district, professional development?
For the most part. And you can, you could tell, you know, just from looking at this, that it just wasn't offered the last couple of years. That's why you see a slight increase into this year. And then we finally have people coming in for, you know, for in-house stuff as well as going out, which just wasn't happening before. But we could, yeah, we, we definitely have things on our radar that we know are annual things that we kind of rotate teachers through. Occasionally something will come up, you know, out of the blue that, you know, there's some interest in that we'll try to support if we can.
From a budgetary standpoint, for, you know, teachers that have to fill in for that, you, you have a pretty good plan for that.
And I would also just point out that if you look all the way back to 2019, 2020, and you look at the current year, you know, there's also been some thought about, you know, how much teachers and individuals are out of the classroom. You know, because we haven't even gone back to the level we're at in 2019, 2020 for professional employment in districts. And, you know, we're mindful that there are staff shortages as well. So we're being thoughtful about that concept also. And then this is, this is just average classroom teacher attendance data over multiple years. It's somewhat gets reported to the state through the ED 165 report. So it just gives us kind of an overall trend as far as kind of how we've been looking. Our, our in-house data doesn't go back as many years. Historically, we could only go back four years. So we wanted to just kind of show the trend going all the way back earlier to 17, 18, 19, 19. So we can see over a period of time, if you average all of the attendance, it stays fairly, you know, consistent other than 19, 20. It does drop down a bit. But the 22, 23 data is not yet available, hasn't been reported to the state, but we'll be able to kind of see what that looks like. And if we're seeing a spike in that data that gets reported up to the state. And just to clarify, my understanding, this is personal and sick illness only, correct? Yes. So it'll be interesting to see if that kind of spikes, you know, across the years and when the 22, 23 data gets reported. So we'll continue to kind of monitor that as far as, you know, where we're stacking up. But you know, over time, it's fairly consistent, but I think certainly, I think we probably all agree it could improve.
And it's not shown on this graph. I can't, I don't know if you, you mentioned it, Lori, but the 21, 22 numbers, which weren't part of the state report because it wasn't yet on the state site, is that 10.1?
Oh, yes, thank you.
10.07.
It's 10.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. But it hasn't, it did improve a little bit. Yes, you're right.
Any questions about this?
I mean, and really the last two slides have sort of summed up a lot of the points that were already made. So we can kind of go through it and then open it up for any last questions. But, you know, we're definitely, like you've mentioned, we're definitely seeing a lingering impact from COVID. As Lori mentioned, our first, you know, first full year back to school where everyone is on mask. You know, immunity is low due to several years of masking. Among the tridemic, we are continuing and we're continuing to see COVID-related illnesses. So again, going back to those steps, we are monitoring the attendance, both staff and students. You know, we identified some of those areas of concern and some of the board members brought up some from others. So we are definitely, there are ongoing discussions about what kind of supports we can put in place to help things improve. One of the key things we, we want to do is, is continue to provide Uh, one of the key things we we want to do is is continue to provide. Um, and increase the social emotional support, and that's for staff and students um alike. Because um, you know, we know that it's affecting everyone. It's not just scientific case. Um, and again, we've already mentioned some of these, we know, we've started talking about these um. You know, what we could do, um, is there a way to provide some type of incentives um for attendance? Um, you know. You, I don't know if we want to have certificates, you know, to acknowledge um good attendance. Um, I mentioned these earlier about family engagement campaigns. What can we do to get? More families in the building and building that sense of community. I think you've heard that come up. Uh, many times throughout the night as a key part in helping uh. Helping kids find a reason to come to school every day, whether that's through increasing our after school clubs. Uh, increasing our activities for, you know, uh for family engagement. But um, you know, we definitely want to look to see what what's working and what's not, and what's helping bring kids and families into the buildings. Um, to build that support. And across, and of course, we mentioned the support for students with military roots, uh knowing that. They face uh different and and additional obstacles, um and how we can continue to help them too. So that is it. We didn't, you know, we we hit a lot during, you know, I think your questions really helped drive this presentation, so I do appreciate everybody's observation. You're seeing what we saw in the data, um and you're in and then your additional eyes on the data are helping us see things. Um, that we could uh continue to act on, so. Uh, that's our presentation. That's, you know, we will continue to look at it. You've heard us. Discuss our processes is monthly, if not more so, in the buildings. Um, and our district data team also will continue to to use, you know, to have attendance on its agenda to to monitor the progress across the district.
Liz, now, you mentioned that the state wants um districts to be at five percent. Have they given you any guidance on how to achieve that?
Um, I mean, other than, you know, I think some of the things, you know, I think um. Community engagement, those types of things, the letters, you know, keep that all coming from the state in terms of. Um, provide, you know, increasing that communication and reaching out and using community resources, so that's all come from the state. Um, and that's what we've helped build our plans around.
I think also some of the funding and grant funding for like some after school activities and and those types of things. Have been so.
Is there any place in the state that's at five percent or lower?
Not that I'm aware of. We can, we can look into that.
I was just kind of curious.
Yeah.
That would be kind of, you know, like.
Well, I mean, also our attendance history, whether um, I mean, it is also has what made us in the. It was one of the many reasons why we are in Alliance School District. So let me make sure that I, so from from Beverly. Um, you want to hear um just sort of the social, have uh one or two social workers come and. Have present what they do in terms of uh their, as they're a member of the team of each of the schools um in support of getting. Families and uh children and their families be engaged in school. I've also heard from um Jay. Um, just to have a more uh disaggregate of some of the data um so that we can kind of see what that means um. And is there other things that we want to make sure that we get followed through on? I don't want to miss anything.
And I tried to write down the questions on this.
Oh, the military percentage. Thank you, Christine.
Done with it.
I appreciate.
And Kim, in the chat, Miranda wrote that it says that. Uh, what did she say? Sorry for putting this in the chat. The federal law, the compact says. L E As may grant ten days of absences. Connecticut law says shall grant ten days.
Thanks.
So.
That's the.
Wow, okay, but I guess it's still being held against us just in terms of what um it goes down as absenteeism. Thank you, Miranda. I appreciate that. And thank you, Beverly, for reading that. All right. Um, there was a request made on by Jay um to add one agenda item. To the agenda, and that is just to get an update about what happened. Um, at the uh Mystic River um Magnet School. In order, just to get an update on that, did anyone? I did not get the letter from Phil, so. So that did not go through. Um, but can I just see if there, is there agreement to add this to the agenda, just so we can get an update about what happened this afternoon?
Yes, please.
One, two, three, Andrea?
Yes.
Okay.
Jay, I'm assuming. And Beverly?
Yes.
Okay, so we.
And I just want to thank the the people that came with the attendance presentation. I just want to say thank you to them.
Beverly says thank you. And Christie just gave a huge wave. Beverly, this is actually, I'm so very thankful for your um request for this. Um, uh agenda topic and the attendance. It's been kind of helpful. Thank you. Um, all right, so Phil.
And I do want to mention, I I did send some.
Excuse me, Kim. To add an item to your agenda, you need a two thirds vote.
Okay, all those in favor of adding this to the.
Need a first and second.
Thank you. I have a, um, I'm making a motion to add this to the agenda. I have a second by Liz. Any discussion? So the motion that's on the floor is to get an update on the Mystic River Magnet School cafeteria ceiling. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those, um, all those opposed? Abstain, the motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Jones, for keeping me honest.
Um, I did send an email out at two fifty five. Now, I used the Board of Ed member. Email. Apparently, that is a, is an old, maybe it's an older.
Probably.
So I apologize for that. Um, it was just, I just included the message that was going out to Mystic River families by their um. Principal Stephen Wheeler. Um, and I I'll read that.
Please.
Uh, just for everybody here, today during our first lunch wave, a small portion of the ceiling in the cafeteria began to sag. Students were immediately moved to another section of the cafeteria and then dismissed to their classrooms to finish lunch. Uh, in addition, students from the remaining two lunch waves also ate lunch in their classroom. Uh, the fire department was called and arrived to meet with maintenance staff as they assessed the situation. Um, student and safety, student and staff safety is a priority, therefore, students will remain eating lunch. And breakfast in their classrooms until the cafeteria is ready for us to utilize the space once again. Um, and then he ended it just saying he'll continue to update families as new information becomes available.
And my understanding from Sam um is is that the contractor is coming down tomorrow morning to look at the cafeteria. On ceiling.
Yeah, they're coming at six A M to meet uh with Sam. Um, it's not water damage. That was my first, when I first heard the news, I assumed it was some type of water, even though it hasn't really rained. Uh, too much lately, but it has, it it is not due to water, so it's structural in nature, so uh. I will, you know, maybe I'll send the email to you and then, or I'll figure out. Which email works best.
Uh, or you can just ask one of the administrative assistants, like Joyce. She sends us emails all the time.
Okay. Um, so I'll keep you guys, as Sam updates me tomorrow, I'll continue to keep the board.
I appreciate that. I'm I'm going to recognize Dean.
Um, listen.
So, two new elementary school. Our elementary schools were built at roughly the same time. So I'm, I'd like to think that if this is investigated, that we're also going to, and a problem is found, that we're also going to take a peek at Danes River.
I think that's a great idea.
Hey. Hi.
Maybe just a one off, but.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Kim. I I I can't figure out how to raise my hand, so I apologize. Um, is 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 any of this under warranty, or do you think it's something that we are going to have to pay for?
So I actually asked this, that same question to Sam. It is not under warranty. Um, he was trying to describe to me that it was actually, I guess there's like the cloud ceiling. So there's the upper ceiling and there's this ceiling. It was this one. It was something like a Joyce. It wasn't a structural issue in terms of. The building. It was actually the things um that held. He, that's all that he had, um, but it is post. Um, warranty, um, and that's what I know.
How old are the schools, Kim?
Two years.
Two years?
Two?
Yeah. But that would be a great question um to see if, um, to Dean's point is, should there be some investigation to our other new school?
Or is that because?
All right. Um, and Sam is also, um, he actually was going to be here, um, but then he needed. He just is going to be up at six o'clock to meet with the contractor, so it's nice that he's actually, the contractor's coming so quickly. Any other questions on that agenda item? Thank you. Let's move to the last one. Um, so I I just, um, Susan, Joyce and I. Uh, let me explain. So Susan, Joyce and I uh met about um three weeks ago. Um, and there are two, there should be two other sheets besides the PowerPoint. There is the Board of Education meeting template that has the months. This was something that was created, I think, maybe five years ago, and I'm lying. Maybe six years ago, um, where we were just trying to kind of keep what was sort of the normal things that got talked about. Um, on each month. It's not an exclusive. In other words, we can add things to it, but these are sort of like when we go to the. When we go set the agenda or in the past. Seven years when we've gone to the, or since this has been here, when we set the agenda for each one of the cap, the committee of the whole meetings or the Board of Ed meetings. We make sure that what's on here um also gets um put in if it hasn't been in before. It's not exhaustive, and as you know, we always add things to the list. So what you might notice is that the referral tracking sheet, which has the curriculum policy. And the committee of the whole financing facilities and communication. I also went that over with Susan. Um, and Joyce and I, but we did not touch curriculum policy. Um, finance or communication because it's not my committee to touch, so I didn't touch any of those. But some of the stuff that was on the committee of the whole that we were seeing on a regular or were, it's said ongoing. We tried to find a place where it might go into the template. Um, and so um, I would. We just, with Susan not being here and also knowing that the next two meetings are going to be pretty big in terms of the Board of Education. Uh, regular meeting where we're going to have the data of the of the K through three reading, and then our first committee of the whole is going to be on our reading program. Um, I just wanted to make sure that this kind of got taught, that got talked to. Um, and when I was reading over the board policies, who knew I was actually following protocol? Because we're actually supposed to once a month, once a year, go through this template to make sure things got. Talked to, so that's, that's the reason why this is on, um. Liz?
I think there needs to be, and Phil, you got to help me out here. Under your regular board meeting, B O E meeting on the fourth Monday, we need to add either November or December. We need to add the adoption of any grant of uh new curricula.
Perfect.
All right, so that needs to be added. I I would say even starting.
Report be done in January, because they, I think they have until.
Yeah.
Generally, they have until.
So, so the problem that we have, the problem that we have starting to in January. Is is we go the judge, the budget. However, it's really important um that we talk about that, so. Um, i- it makes sense to do it in your regular board meeting in January?
I, no, I think it's honestly, we need to be able to vote on these things. Um, in December at the latest. Because we we should be according to our schedule. If we follow our schedule, we need to have the board to be able to vote on. The addition of, the addition of any new curricula. Prior to January, because that's when it gets published now, even though it's it's electronic publishing.
Oh, would that necessitate an agenda? I think that could be on an agenda to vote without it.
It doesn't have to be on here, however, uh to her point is that for this, because this template is for years to come. Is it might be nice to put in December, um, if 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 necessary, if necessary approval of um new curriculum.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be willing to put, do you have that template in front of you?
Yes, I do, and I'm writing.
I love you. Would you be able to make sure that Joyce and Susan gets that?
I will see her first thing in the morning.
Love it. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, is there um anything that people want to add as a, on the, on um. Uh, the referral tracking sheet?
Referral tracking sheet.
Like, is there any, is there any, is, is there any um agenda items people want to chat about? Um, Jay, um, Matthew sent me one, and I think it was more appropriate to go into finance. And it's about, um, the process of going to electric for our school buses. And is there a way to sort of begin to kind of take a look at that? Uh, and so I was actually going to put that into finance to to kind of look at. Sure. I will, I will send, I will send that email to you.
Yeah, he had sent that to me as well. Um, the agenda is already set. Uh, for this month, but we can certainly add it for a future meeting.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be done immediately, since it's going to take a while for any of that to do, but um I was just going to move that to finance.
Right, important to keep track of all the things that that we need to be looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought we already talked about electric school buses in in finance.
So it was more about key pumps?
Yeah, Matthew was bringing up some other ideas, just to keep the conversation going. I mean, it's, it's going to happen. We, so we can't. We can't act as though it's not going to happen someday, but we need to uh to know what the best practices are.
Yeah. Anything else? Andrea, did you come on just to say hi, or do you have an agenda item, or are you going to make a motion?
I do believe I moved to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
And William has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
All right.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion is carried. Good night, folks.
Good night.